Okay, Mayor, you're good to go.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us. Another virtual meeting for all of us. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11th, 2019. The notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindel?
Here.
Council members Havegood?
Here.
Carmely?
Here.
LaGrillo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey? You're on mute. Contract?
Here.
Gardia?
Here.
Voice?
Here.
So, Mike, are you ready? Did you bring your flag?
Flag is ready.
I have my flag too, so we are gonna, if you want to stand, but we're gonna do our salute to the flag. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're getting better at that.
We are. It's why we need our Town Council background, so we can put our flags in the back.
That's right.
I'll bring a Metrodome next time.
Yeah. So, Jim, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. A few updates. Couple of things. So, Menduascan Park, great news. Looks like the pathway project will be completed tomorrow from installing the new pathways. There's still a lot of restoration work to be done after that, and of course, the paving of Park Drive. But our engineer was out there today, and they finished up about 90% of the pathway installations today, and it looks like they'll finish up tomorrow. And if you haven't been out there or seen it, it's, it looks beautiful. They've done a nice job. So, that's exciting. And of course, in addition to that, I met with Public Works Director and Parks and Fields Director Supervisor Monday, getting ready to start on some plantings at the playground, which we talked about last year around the benches that we installed last year around the playground, as well as a major cleanup of the hill area that goes from the Mountain Avenue Plateau of Menduascan down the hill to the road there. There's a lot of older, really very bad shape landscaping and some old trees that are dying. So, we're gonna do a whole cleanup of that whole area there to get it ready for some new plantings and a better clear view from the Mountain Avenue area down to the rest of the park, which is how, historically, how it used to be. So, we're very excited about that, and that'll be starting. The park will probably remain closed for the next few weeks to get all this work done, but it's really gonna be very nice when it's, when it's all finished. Also, it was a paving. I mentioned in my email to you Friday, but we had Elizabeth Town Gas finished up a few projects it was doing. As of, I think, yesterday, we finished up, well, Elizabeth Town Gas finished up paving Cherokee Court entire length, Dunham Avenue entire length, Settlers Lane entire length, a portion, a large portion of Fairwickers, which they touched, as well as a portion of the place. So, that's the first grid that they've been working on, that they finished all the main line replacement and the house services. And we'll be meeting next week with the Public Works Committee to review other projects that are in the queue for them, what we can expect from a paving perspective for them, and what else we can do to supplement that for the balance of the year. Some work come on paving, but already five roads we paved are already done this year, which is great. And I really thank Elizabeth Town Gas for their partnership, continued partnership from last year, which has been great. Couple other things to the memorial pool. There was an article, a very optimistic article, written in the Westfield leader by a younger reporter who attended the Recreation Commission meeting. And as your article indicated, the Recreation Director and the Assistant Director, Don and Heather, are very eager and excited about having a pool season, and we are planning to have one. Of course, us, like everybody else in the state, is waiting for guidance from the state, what we can and can't do, not just with pool, summer camps, summer programs, and a lot of chatter going back and forth between administrators in the state, recreation directors, professionals in the state. So, we're hoping to get guidance in the next week or two from the state. So, we do plan an opening, if we are allowed to open. And of course, whatever, however we open, it might look a lot different than it's looked in the past, whether it be restricted hours, restricted capacity in the pool on a daily basis, disinfecting things, of course, during the pool day, staffing requirements. But we're ready for that. We just have to wait to get the proper guidance and make a plan. So, there'll be, the Finance Policy Committee has talked about it briefly, as well as the Recreation Commission. So, once we have more guidance, we'll be releasing information to the public as soon as we can, pool membership. But it's, we're excited to have some sort of a season if we can, and I know that Don and Heather and the staff will be able to make sure that not only we have something, but it's also safe. A couple of things, budget FAQs. We've been receiving some budget questions. We've been responding. So, by next week, we'll actually post everything we received so far, as we've done in the past, and then encourage everybody, if you have questions about the budget, there's still a two-week period between now and May 26th, when the budget will be held, a public hearing for adoption, and you can actually start viewing the FAQs we've received to date and the answers, and more FAQs come in, we'll be able to those questions and answers as we get them. So, again, the budget@westfieldnj.gov is the email address. We look forward to questions there. We'll provide answers if we can. Two other things, or three other things, the CARES Act. So, today, the mayor, myself, and the CFO participated on our, on our daily conference call with the county. Today's topic was CARES Act funding that the county has received, and every town was given the opportunity to ask questions today about how we are able to maybe seek reimbursement for things that we've had us pay for so far during this pandemic, things like EP for the police department, buying supplies needed for town hall to reopen to the public at some point, a whole list of things. So, long story short, a very positive call today. We'll be getting some information from the county in the next week or two about forms we had to fill out to start submitting, but we're gonna have a process now, from now until December, we'll be able to submit on a rolling basis, things that we might be purchasing COVID-19 related, we may have the ability to get reimbursed for. So, that's exciting, and that is separate and distinct from any FEMA reimbursement we may have to apply for in the future as well. So, this is a much cleaner, easier process and quicker process with the county, but we still have FEMA as a secondary option when we get to that point. So, that was very positive today. Last two items, we had a successful deer culling program over the winter, which we, it's been a while since we talked about it. But just a quick reminder, Trax and his committee, Public Works Committee, has been talking about this. So, if you remember, the county came in, we allowed them to do some deer management in both Wrightwood Park. Originally, we talked about the Conservation Center. They actually did not end up using the Conservation Center exactly. They moved down the street on Lambert Mill Road to another section of county-owned property, very, very close to the Conservation Center. They had met with residents in Scotch Plains over there, and so they decided to move down the street a bit. If you remember, they actually were expecting to get between 15 and 25 deer throughout both parks. They ended up getting 20, 16 in Wrightwood, and four in the Lambert Mill Road area. Very successful in the sense that there were no deer running beyond the limits of those areas. Really very quiet, you know, response in the sense that the hunters did a very good job of, you know, doing what they said they would do, treating them, you know, getting them out of there quietly and having no impact to the park. There was some vandalism in Wrightwood Park of some of their equipment during the hunt timeframe, but they were able to repair those things. Some of the cameras they had out there were vandalized. But all in all, a very successful process for the first time around, and I know the county was excited about the first time in Westfield. So, I'll let Councilman Contract say a few words, if he wants to, about that. I think that was the gist of it, right, David?
Yeah, no, I would just add, I think the county did a really good job managing the program professionally, which is what they indicated they would do. I know I spoke to one of the archers who indicated that he thought it went smoothly. There were no residential complaints. They had very little interaction with people. And again, like Jim said, I think the program ran well, and I think we'll talk as a committee about next steps. We still have a deer problem, but I think this was a step towards addressing it.
And one last thing I have, Mayor, just an update. I was, had some records today, and last Thursday was our one-year anniversary of launching Seek, Click, Fix, otherwise known as Westfield Connect. If you remember, we did a six-month report card back in November, and we had some very good statistics. So, I just did a quick, I was on the phone with Seek, Click, Fix today, did a quick little look. We had a very good first 12 months, some quick data. So, we basically, over the course of a 12-month period, we averaged three requests per day, and 80, over 80% of the requests, as we talked about, the six-month period, were for trees and roads. Again, the most requests we're getting are for those two departments. 551 unique users in the program. People have signed up to use the program on a regular basis, and that's up from 400 and change six months ago. And I think the two most important things that we were looking at at the six-month period, and now, now you're into it, it's taking basically one point five days to acknowledge requests when they come in, which is a very good number. A request could come in on a weekend, and actually taking now five days to complete requests or close them out. So, you know, 781 requests have come in to date, and it's average of five days to complete the request for close it out. And I just wanna just let you know that is a very good first year. Seek, Click, Fix has been very impressed with our signup numbers right now so far after 12 months, our response rate. And so now, we're talking about the next steps. Refining our program, adding categories. We did have some categories where more people requesting items that didn't fit into a category. I can think of one with, you know, Chief Battle Laura. We had a lot of traffic signal requests, no timing or signal broken. So, we didn't have an item for that. So, we would transfer those to the police department, and they had Sergeant Ostrander take care of those. So, we're gonna be creating some new categories, refining the program a bit, but very good news, very good first year. Thanks to Public Works and everybody there, and we'll be adding some categories, adding some departments to this, Public Works as we move forward. So, more to come on that, but it's amazing. It's already been one year since we launched the program. And I want to thank the residents for those that have joined and encourage other residents to join. One of the things we've seen in the past three weeks particularly, Westfield Connect requests have actually been on the rise, and we think that's due to the pandemic and everyone getting outside walking. They're seeing more things. That's what happens when you walk around. You see the faded sign, the hanger of a branch in a tree, or the pothole on the road, and we've seen an uptick in our requests in the past three weeks. So, we encourage people to join, Seek, Click, Fix, Westfield Connect program, submit requests, and Public Works is obviously doing a great job getting to them. And again, we're gonna add more categories as we go forward, but it's a really good first 12 months. So, exciting news to share. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Jim. And once again, I just want to thank everybody for joining us virtually tonight. As you can see, we're here with the Town Council and Town Planner Don Sammet and Tom Jardine and our Police Chief Battle Laura. So, and I just remind everybody that public comment will only be accepted via Zoom, even though we're live streaming for viewing only on Facebook. So, the replay will also be available afterwards on Facebook, YouTube, TV36, and tonight's comments will be the, my regular COVID-19 update. And before I do, I want to go into my remarks, we would be remiss, Jim, if we didn't extend our condolences to you and your wife Monica and your entire extended family on the passing of Monica's dad over the weekend from a COVID-related illness on Saturday. So, please know that we're all thinking about you, and it just really hits, brings it all home, you know, when we have somebody so close to us and who we know about really the severity and the impact of this, of this disease. So, condolences to you, Jim, and Monica.
Oh, thank you very much, and I just thank you for the council and just the friends and family in town, outpouring supporters. Been great. And yeah, it's a sad, sad thing, and we're one of many, many families that have experienced this. So, bark goes out to everybody, and I really appreciate the comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Absolutely. And so, just an update on where we are. For COVID, there are currently 140,743 cases in New Jersey. There's another 704 still under investigation. The county reports about 14,200, and Westfield, we were reporting two new cases today, one of which is new. The other one was, as a report, is one that was more than 30 days old, but newly reported to us. So, our case total in Westfield is 253. And in a minute, I'm gonna ask the chief to comment a little bit on what the reporting process is, because it's a little, you know, there's a lot of lags and other things, and I'll give, let him give some context for it after I provide you guys this update. And I, you know, last time when we were together via Zoom, two weeks ago, there were almost 114,000 cases in New Jersey with 216 in Westfield. So, we've got about 50 more cases even in the last two weeks. The more detailed breakdown is always available in the New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 dashboard. Now, I'm gonna try something. I charted some of this stuff, and I'm gonna share my screen with you. Just you can actually, sometimes I think when you see it, tell me if this works. You guys see that?
Yep.
All right. So, this is the actual, actually, you know, let me take, let me do the first one first. This is, this is actually, if you just chart the cases in Westfield, this is as of yesterday, so it doesn't account the new one today. So, this reflects our 251 cases, and I also charted the long-term cases, because it was interesting to see of the long-term cases, of which there are about 37, I think. I just, it was always curious to see if the long-term cases were making up a disproportionate number of the new cases, because that would indicate that that community spread has slowed down, and it's all, it's very confined to these, to those two facilities. But as you can see, while they have grown, they aren't representing the disproportionate number that maybe I had anticipated. I think this is an interesting growth chart. This just shows what the percentage, you know, growth is. And this is where I think is really where we can see the, what we call the flattening of the curve. And, and you could see the epicenter, and any of the data that we see was really the week of April 10th. And I'll show the, and we have some overlook data that actually supports that. I think overlook was at its peak at April 11th. So, I think, I just wanna, I think when you visualize it like this, it really, I want to give a real hats off to the community. We, I think, have done phenomenally well. I was reading somewhere, they did cases per thousand, and I think we are, we're at about eight cases per thousand. We were one of the lowest that they had, were reporting. So, and certainly, I think, one of the lowest in the county. So, I just want to reaffirm to everybody that all this, I do think that our, our success in slowing the, the spread of this disease is really, really a credit to the community, and I just want to make sure that you all know that your, your good deeds and selfless act of social distancing is indeed working. So, now I want to unshare, right? So, uh, let's see, have I unshared? Do you still see this? What do you see? So, you see me now, right?
You'll see the screen.
You still see the screen?
Mayor, click on Share Screen. It should turn it off.
Yeah, just click on Share Screen.
Yes, I'm trying to, hold on. You guys, stop sharing. There we go. Sorry, I couldn't find it. There we go. So, so that's, that's, all right. So, anyway, that just kind of gives you a sense of where we are. And as I mentioned regarding overlook, as they, 311 was their number of COVID cases on April 10th. They're now at 77, and actually, they saw a really, I thought, remarkable drop off in COVID hospitalizations just the last three days. I think it dropped by like 30. So, it's all really great news. I mean, it's, there's still a bit to go, as you can imagine. I have no doubt, I think, as everybody believes that we are gonna see some type of second wave. We just want to make sure that our, we are, we will have the capacity and capability to manage it. But we still all need to do our part to make sure that, you know, we are kind of continuing to slow it down as opposed to going, you know, spiking it up again. So, just some news on the statewide. Actually, before I move to that, Chief, do you want to comment a little bit on the reporting about, and how the numbers work and how they get reported and when?
Of course, Mayor. The Office of the Attorney General and the Department of Health reached an agreement where positive COVID test information is shared with, with law enforcement. So, each day, the information comes to me. I get two lists each day through the county prosecutor's office. One is a report of all new tests of people who report their residence to be in Westfield, and I get one list that is a purge list of tests that have reached 30 days in age. What we do with that information, we get the name and the address of each positive test. And what we do with that information is we create flags in our computer-rated dispatch system. So, if we dispatch police, fire, or EMS to an address where there is a positive test, we're able to inform our responding officers or firefighters or EMTs so that they can take appropriate mitigation measures, such as donating full personal protective equipment before entering the residence. So, I get those numbers each day by 5:00. I know everybody's specific name and address. That information, I work with our IT technician to create the alarm flags, the CAD flags in our system. I'm able to provide numbers. I do want everybody to know the names and the addresses. We hold that with the strictest of confidentiality. That information is not shared with anyone. Our own personnel don't know who those people are or the addresses are unless we specifically query that address or that person or respond to that location. But I am able to give numbers each day of new positive tests, and I'm also able to see those tests that have reached 30 days in age, and at that point, we purge the CAD flags. I can tell you the information that we get. There's a lot of mistakes with it, a lot of incomplete names, incomplete addresses. I go through a whole validation process each day before I forward that to our IT technician, just to make sure that we're getting, a lot of the addresses that come across are not even legitimate Westfield addresses, or they're, it's all based on how information is reported at the time of the test and entered into the communicable disease registry. But I am able to forward the, the numbers that I receive each day to, to the mayor and to Kim Ford, our public information officer, so we can see exactly where these positive tests are. I can tell you, we've seemed to be holding steady at about 15% of the total, come from one of two of our long-term care centers in town. We're not seeing extraordinary numbers coming from there, but that's how the information comes across every day. Like I said, I don't share names. I don't share addresses. That's held with complete confidentiality. I just provide numbers to the town.
But I think you're, the need that you have to kind of scrub it, if you will, in terms of validation, just shows, you know, a little bit of the uncertainty sometimes of the data that we get. And so, it's more, you know, it's, you're doing a great job, but I just want the public to understand. I understand that they're using some health reporting software that was never intended to actually generate reports, and it's been jerry-rigged to handle this. And so, we're all kind of, you know, we're doing a great job in spite of what's put in front of us. So, thank you for that, Chief. Just following up on the state, today, his update focused, the governor's update focused only on testing and contact tracing, as you may know, both of which are critical components for reopening plan. So, we're well on our way to our next goal of being able to provide at least 20,000 tests by the end of the month. Back in March, it was 6,000, so we're getting there, but we have a long way to go, and that's, that's gonna help inform a lot of opening decisions, et cetera. There is a new directive about long-term care facilities. All residents and staff at long-term care facilities will be tested no later than May 26th, and with follow-up testing not more than one week later. They're also issuing a standing order across the state that access to testing without a prescription for residents with possible exposure can fall in priority categories, primarily for the, anybody that lacks access to, access to a primary care practitioner. So, they're looking at mobile testing sites, units and testing sites that are gonna be setting up within institutions of faith are gonna be also included in the expansion of testing plans. There also, you may have also, and I've actually gotten a lot of emails about this, about this contact tracing corps that's got to be set up. It's an entire community that's gonna be run by the state of contact tracers to help those on the ground and decentralize efforts. And I think he is gonna be issuing an executive order to ensure that local health departments and state health officials are all working off the same platform, so we have hopefully good and all access to the same information. And I think they're signing an MOA with Rutgers School of Public Health, who's gonna establish the first group of the new contact tracing workforce. I've gotten a lot of interest from people who want to be contact tracers. You can go to covid19 at nj.gov/tracer, and there'll be all the information there, and you can, and they're also accepting applications. So, please check that out. And if you haven't been on the state's COVID-19 dashboard and website, it's very robust, and I would encourage you to do that. Also, the Motor Vehicle Commission is adding a lot of new things. They're adding more online services, including registration and renewals for additional vehicle types, license renewals, address changes, all that kind of stuff. So, go to njfc.gov for that. And just locally, as follow-up to the county conversation that we had, they are also establishing a process for all municipal employees in the county to be tested, which is a key step in our ability to anticipate and reopen Town Hall to the public when, once the guidance allows for that. So, in addition to all employees that are gonna be tested before they come to work and serve, and serve the public, we're also gonna be installing things like plexiglass panels and sanitizing protocols, et cetera, because we need to make sure that any employees that interact with the public are all gonna be, you know, operating in a maximum safe environment. So, just know, we are anticipating and preparing for when that day happens, and I think access to employee-wide testing is a good first start, good first step. And also, as we continue to look at data, and as I said, the data looks encouraging, we are looking at the next phase of reopening our parks, which is gonna be the tennis courts for limited play in accordance with USTA guidelines, as well as the parks' parking lots. So, we are hoping, we're gonna have, hopefully, working with the chief and others and have our protocols finalized in the next day or two, which will run by the full council and anticipate a reopening of the tennis courts and the parking lots by the weekend. So, we just want to make sure that everybody obviously adheres to social distancing protocols. Obviously, we're gonna be very reliant on the community to do what they can. And the issue with tennis courts previously, and I've spoken to some and others, it wasn't about the tennis per se itself. It was about the people waiting in line and watching. So, so I think, you know, we can only do so much on our part, and we're really gonna be reliant on the community to, to do your part as well. And you've obviously demonstrated a great ability to do that. So, we'll be sending out news, more specific news in the next day or so, but you can anticipate tennis courts and parking lots reopening by this weekend. So, and it looks like it's gonna be a good weather forecast, so I'm sure that'll be welcome news. And the big thing that we're actually doing tonight as a council is we're voting on a resolution to designate the downtown special improvement district as an area in need of rehabilitation. And let me just explain this a little bit, because I think there's two different designations that we're referring to. There's an area in need of redevelopment, which I referred and spoke at length about at the March 10 council meeting, and that's what you've heard about the, the eight municipal parking lots, the Lord and Taylor lots, and Rialto. That, the area need of rehabilitation is a bit different than that, and it's, and I'm gonna let Don address it more specifically. And it has a much lower threshold to me, and what it does, it encourages property owners to invest in improving their properties by incentivizing them with tax abatements on the value of their improvements. So, to give you just an example of what that would mean, if somebody owns a building that's worth a million dollars, let's say, and they put in $200,000 worth of improvements, and they need to be material improvements. They improve, you know, facades, maybe they add a store or floor or other things. Typically, as most homeowners know, once you get the CO on your improvement, your taxes reflect that new value from day one. What the area need of rehabilitation does, it actually lets them maintain the, just get taxed on the value of that property for the five years after the improvement value, so that they have five years to grow into and monetize the value of their improvement. And a lot, I've heard from others that, you know, once they get slammed, what they say, the tax increase from day one, and they haven't had any chance to derive additional revenue from that improvement, it becomes a disincentive to actually want to invest in their property. So, this is a way to actually incentivize them so the town doesn't lose anything. We maintain all of our revenue that we've maintained. It just gives them an opportunity to grow into the cost of their improvements over time. As I mentioned before, towns do this all the time. The entire, the South Orange, Village of South Orange is an area in need of rehab. Village of South Orange is an area need of rehab. The entire borough of the Tuchan is an area need of rehab. It has applied to residential areas in many cases. But we thought the best place to start was within the special improvement district, which is the area that's supported by the downtown Westfield Corporation, as it means to get them. And I will tell you, we had anticipated this prior to this pandemic. But I think more than ever, these types of redevelopment designations will be very critical to getting them back on their feet and to actually want to invest in improving our properties over time, which I think is going to be really, really critical. So Don, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would say is, you know, thanks to the council's support, we've been able to really move at light speed with this. We had the necessary resolutions prepared. Town engineer and I prepared a necessary report to show that the area met the rehabilitation criteria. And we've been working with the town redevelopment council. And we should have ready for you at your next meeting, the actual ordinances, which would establish the short term or five-year tax incentives. So we can get those going as soon as we can. So it's a great tool. As a planner, I love it. I'm glad we're doing this.
That's great. And as I said, the property owners were thrilled, so much so, sorry for the dogs in the back, so much so. Actually, when we had a meeting with the property owners and we were presenting this, one of the ones that had recently purchased a building was in the midst of doing renovations. They had a meeting that day, and they had decided to actually, I think, reduce, I think they're looking at whether they put in premium amenities or not, and they didn't think that they could afford to upgrade a lot of the amenities. And after we talked to them about rehab, they said it was exactly what they needed to go back and being able to invest in terms of the improved quality of the materials that they were using. So it was like a live example. They had done development, in other words, in other places, and had used it. So it was a live example of the benefit to the community. So I just want to thank the council for their support and really thank Don, you, and Chris for this and all the work on the redevelopment. So and by the way, we have created a redevelopment site on the website. And so we're, as we, all the resolutions will be there and Q and A about redevelopment, not only for rehab redevelopment. It's just going to be kind of a centralized location as we move forward on any, any and all of these questions. So so thank you again, Don, and for Chris McElhern too, for for his work on that. And just in closing, I just want to again, want to extend my thanks really to the community. It's been really quite remarkable to see how selfless everybody has been on so many measures. It's really overwhelming. And I think one day we'll all be able to look back and take a collective sigh and really reflect back on what it is we've just gone through together. We have made tremendous progress, which you've seen in the data. As I said, we still have work to do. I think it's, the concern is when you open the door a little bit, people just run right through it. And I think we're all going to have to show a bit of restraint and use our really good judgment and know that this is going to be with us for a while. You know the places to avoid. You know what not to avoid. Wash your hands. Don't touch your face. You know, try to keep your kids close. And and this is like, at least the reopening of the expansion of the parks is a first step. And I think the governor is going to be coming up with some more specific guidance by the end of the week about timetables. So so thank you. We'll continue to prioritize sharing information with all of you about the decision we make, the impacts all of our lives. So so thank you, as we all make decisions that we are really based on the interest of public health above all else. So thank you. So with that, let's see, Mrs. Rowley, do we have any advertised hearings?
Yes, Mayor, there's one advertised hearing. It's for general ordinance number 2170, an ordinance for calendar year 2020 to establish a cap bank. Anyone wishing to be heard on general ordinance number 2170, please virtually raise your hand, make your comment, be sure to include your name and address. And again, this is for general ordinance number 2170.
A minute here, just to check and see if there's any questions on it. I see nobody.
Okay, thank you. So seeing nobody, Mary, you make close a hearing?
This hearing is closed. Council and Hapgood, please move for the adoption of general ordinance number 2170.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for the adoption of general ordinance number 2170 on the second reading, an ordinance for calendar year 2020 to establish a cap.
May I have a second?
Second, contract.
That's about councilman contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrapo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Good.
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brendel?
Yes. This motion is carried. May I have a motion from the minutes from the town council conference session and regular meeting of April 28, 2020?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman LaGrapo, second?
Second, Dardia.
Second by Councilman Dardia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
This motion is carried. But do we have any petitions or communications?
No, Mayor.
Now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Anyone, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment on any subject on which we have jurisdiction, and be sure and state your name and address for the record.
We have one question, Mayor, that came through the Q and A. And the question is from Brad Rothenberg. Will private tennis clubs be allowed to open as well? Westfield Outdoor, No Mahegan, etc. I think we know. Want to answer that, Mayor?
Yeah, I have to say, as of now, no. And I know that's how, I have been going back and forth with the governor's office specifically. And I've also talked to both the Westfield Tennis Club and the folks at No Mahegan, because currently municipal courts are allowed to open, but private tennis clubs are not. And I'll be honest with you, that doesn't really make a lot of sense to me because I feel like at least private tennis clubs are actually probably able, have a greater ability to manage social distancing protocols than we are able to manage on the on the municipal courts. So I was hoping to get further guidance from the governor's office and that both of them would be opening simultaneously. Because the other concern, legitimate concern, is that an absence of private clubs being open, that our municipal courts could have the potential to get very crowded. So I think a change in the governor's stance is, you know, imminent. When I say imminent, in the next, you know, week or so. But but I don't, we decided irrespective of that decision, we are going to move forward with opening ours. But but yes, as of today, and as of the guidance I got at 5 o'clock tonight, they are still, they are still closed.
Hey, I was waiting to see if anyone else has a question. You can virtually raise your hand. We'll call on you or the Q and A. I don't see anybody here at this point. Give another few seconds. No other questions, it appears, Mayor.
All right. So hearing no further comments, I close this portion of the meeting and move to bills and claims. So council and Hapgood.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in an amount of $381,563.20.
May I have a second?
Second, contract.
By Councilman Contract. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next is a report to standing committees, beginning with the Finance Policy Committee. Council and Hapgood.
Thank you again, Mayor. I have six resolutions, five of which I'd like to move as a package. A resolution authorizing the CFO to refund recreation department fees. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for dog licenses for April 2020. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a check for the balance of escrow monies. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for overpaid taxes in 2020. And a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for 2013, 2015 through 2018 pursuant to tax court of New Jersey.
May I have a second?
Second, LaGrapo.
Second by Councilman LaGrapo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
I'd also like to move a resolution to approve temporary emergency appropriations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Parmley. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrapo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brendel?
Yes. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilor Mackey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the installation of a temporary banner to promote the upcoming Westfield Community Food Drive.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Boys.
Second by Councilman Boys. And actually, discussion, Chief, do you want to comment on that and all this, the food drive? It's, and what I, about what the police department is doing with the community food bank?
Sure, sure. With school being out, our our school resource officers have been re-designated as community service officers. They've been working with our chaplain, Deacon Gibbons, and working to handle matters with the Westfield Food Bank. The Westfield Post Office traditionally has conducted a food drive. Due to the present state of affairs, they have not been able to do that this year. So our community resource officers and our and our chaplain have picked up the ball, and they're running with it. So next week, we are having a food drive on the 20th. We'll have two drop off locations. One will be Edison Intermediate School, or Westfield High School, and the other will be Roosevelt Intermediate School. And this is to help work with the the Westfield Food Pantry. There are a lot of people that are in need these days, and we are doing everything we can to help them out as much as possible.
And and they're working in collaboration with the ministerium. So I think that all the houses of worship are all getting involved. So this is a really big deal, and we would encourage the council and anyone else to get the word out about this food drive. And this is something, UBS wants to put a banner on the side of their building promoting it. And so we're allowing for this temporary banner to put up to promote the food drive. So so anyway, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed?
Absolutely.
Yeah, this motion is carried.
I would also like to move for the adoption of a resolution delineating an area in need of rehabilitation in the town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Second, Dardia.
Second by Councilman Dardia. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrapo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brendel?
Yes. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
LaGrapo, second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mackey. Y'all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, this motion is carried. The meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Bye, guys.
Stay safe. Bye.